I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Mr. Vieira?
Here.
Doctor Voe?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Doctor Saly?
Here.
Mr. Dangler?
Here. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I hereby certify that this meeting has been posted in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and post as required by law.
Your presentation? The Long Branch Marching Band. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Could you come up, please?
Just turn this way. So, good evening, everybody. This is like more people we've had at a council meeting in years, so thank you for being here. And I know you probably won't be staying the whole meeting, so on behalf of the council and myself and everybody up here, I just want to wish all the parents and students and faculty members who are here a happy Thanksgiving. And again, thank you all for being here. This is great, and congratulations. Before I begin, I just have a few things I wanted to say. First off, I want to thank Councilwoman Rose Wittes and Council President Dangler for taking the initiative with this presentation. As you may know, both of them were on the Board of Education, were very involved with students for several years. But the City Council and I are very happy to have members of our outstanding high school marching band in attendance at tonight's meeting, so thank you. Many of us up here are Long Branch alumni, so we're all proud to recognize and congratulate our marching band's achievements this year. As I don't need to tell any of you, our marching band has a rich history of accomplishment, and this outstanding year is the most recent in a string of many successes. So, I'm going to be very proud to introduce Bob Clark. I'm told we're going to see a video. Bob, obviously, is the director and in many ways the foundation of the marching band. He's going to say a few words about the history of the band, what they did this year, then Councilman, Council President Dangler has a few things to say. But again, on behalf of all of us, thank you to the students who participated this year, to the parents who supported them who were here, and the band leaders who made this year's season possible. So, thanks again.
Just to kind of go through a brief history of some of the accomplishments of the band. This is the second time in our history that we've won the Yamaha Cup. I believe the last time was when Mr. Dangler was a band parent. And so, but it was an honor to win the Yamaha Cup at Giants Stadium, and then again this year at MetLife Stadium. Some of the accomplishments of the band this year, they had three first-place finishes, including the Yamaha Cup, four Best Visual Awards, four Best Effect Awards, three Best Music Awards, two Best Color Guard Awards, one Best Percussion Award. And they held their ranking through the season. They ended up being ranked sixth at Nationals, and they held their ranking at sixth. So, congratulations to all of you on a great season.[223.23][223.23](applause) And just briefly on the history of the band, one of the main things that we have that keeps us like this is community support. Support from the Board of Education, support from Central Office, and support from the community. And continuity is a ridiculously important thing, and we kind of joke about it, but I believe Dominic Soriano started in 1957, and he was the band director through, and he handed it off to Jerry Rizden, and he had the band for 13 years, and then I moved up from elementary school, and I've had the band, I believe, for the last 22, 23, 22, 23 years. So, really, since 1957, there's been three people to hold this position. And that just doesn't happen in every district and every community, and it's really because of the support that we could keep up the quality of the quality education. So, thank you to the community and everybody for what you do, so we can provide opportunities like this to the students. So, thank you very much.[282.02][282.02](applause) Since everybody is Long Branch alumni, the art form has evolved like everything else. Things change, and it went from when Dominic had the band, it evolved into different squads, and there were majorettes, and there were display flags, and there were twirlers, and they had all these different sections. And when I took the band over and we became competitive, we had to update it to really a modified drum corps style of marching. So, the shows became thematic with one color guard where they had, they had to be kind of multi-talented, and we've made all of those adjustments. And the theme for this year's show was a Cirque du Soleil thing called Journey of Man. So, what we do is we would pick a theme and then start to study it. My wife and I would get, go home, rent videos, and just start thinking and plotting and scheming. And the whole idea is the color guard will be a visual presentation of what you're hearing. You should be able to understand thematically what's happening by seeing it. The shapes are all abstract, and the students are aware of this. There's hard forms, and there's soft forms, and there's flowy forms, and they're supposed to reflect the music as well. And this is really what we're judged on. We're judged on areas of effect, music effect and visual effect. Are we achieving that? And then musically, how well do they play? And am I providing them with the right things? And then visually, how well do they march and display everything? And again, are we providing them with the right things to kind of accomplish that? So, that's what these competitions are all about. We get a panel of judges, and then we continue to improve through the season. So, it's not all just about winning, it's about self-improvement. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to do this. So, with that being said, here's their award-winning performance at MetLife Stadium. This is called Cirque du Soleil's Journey of Man.
Is the band ready? Performing the 2012 program Cirque du Soleil's Journey of Life, man, U.S. Band is proud to present the Long Branch Marching Band. We now take the field in route three, Fall A competition.
As always, Mr. Clark, the marching band, that was an awesome show. I have a couple of things before I read the certificate, because this is sort of personal. I just want to say that a lot of times, the students from the marching band, it goes unnoticed, whether they win the championship or they don't, they put a lot of hours in. They put just as much hours in as a football team, basketball team, track and field, what have you. They're out there on the field every day from when the season starts until the season is over. I do remember when my son came home one day, he said, "Dad, I made the show." And I'm like, "Well, I didn't know that you were going, you know, auditioning for a play or something. What are you talking about, you made the show?" He said, "Mr. Clark said that I made the marching band." Like, "Oh, I didn't know that you tried out, tried out for that." And he was, he was only in eighth grade. Him and his friend William Smith was a part of that, and they were allowed to sit in the stands. And five years later, we never missed a game, we were always there, the parents, not just myself and my wife, but we were always there to support, and I've never seen a machine run as well as the Long Branch marching band and the band parents. So, and the other thing that I wanted to say that it is a, I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but when we were on the board, Rose and I, one of the things that we always noticed, that the students who are part of the band, grades were never an issue. They were always focused, they always knew that they had to hit the books, as well as give and perform as best they can on the field. So, they weren't just there to play the instruments, they were also there to make sure that their grades were in order, so much that a couple of times, they weren't counted as an extracurricular activity when we would honor other athletes for what their grades are and how their programs and where they are ranked, because you guys would always be at the top, and they probably felt like it might not be fair. But I just want to congratulate you, because it is, it is an amazing amount of work, it's amazing dedication. And I noticed, Mr. Clark, before I go to where I'm here, there was a lot of daylight there in that competition. The Yamaha Cup that they won several years ago, it was cold.[1067.15][1067.15](laughter) It was a lot of late nights. Am I right, Jasmine? It was very, very cold. Those hand warmers didn't work, the blankets didn't work, the hot chocolate, it was really milk with some kind of, I mean, water with some kind of chocolate syrup in it. It didn't work. But the band parents, they all came together, we all came together as a community, and just, I'm just amazed that even when my son went to college, Mr. Clark, I would watch, because he was in the marching band, and me and Theresa would be sitting there saying, "They're dropping the notes. They're not playing. They're marching, but they're not playing." And you could see, because the horn is too far away, there's no way that they would be, they would be playing. So, we learned a lot, but it was a good, great time. It's a lot of, matter of fact, I don't think I've seen a college football game on a Saturday until Jason went to college, because we were always out there on the field. So, again, congratulations, and I just want to read this, the certificate that will be right here. In recognition of your contribution to outstanding performance of Long Branch High School Marching Band 2019 season, winning the U.S. Band Division III Yamaha Cup at MetLife Stadium. Three first-place finishes, five Best Visual Awards, four Best Effects Awards, three Best Music Awards, two Best Color Guards Awards, one Percussion Award, and sixth-place ranking nationally in Allentown, PA. So, again, Mr. Clark, we just want to thank you and the staff for all of the work that you do.
Okay, folks, there's a certificate for everybody in the interest of time. I will present all the certificates tomorrow, and if I don't see you tomorrow, you can pick up your certificate at the game on Thursday. But when I do call your name, please come up here. You can start to line up down at the end here. When I call your name, just start to create a line, get to the end, a line in front, and we'll center you all for a photo, okay? So, please come up when your name is called. We have, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, we have everybody. We have Brent Archibald, Leslie, okay, let's, you know what we'll do? Let's hold applause until the end. That makes sense, okay. So, please come up when your name is called. We have Brent Archibald, Leslie Ascencion, Angelina Aviles, Ron Barbosa, Amelia Becerra, Aileen Bonilla Cruz, Serenity Brown, Faith Burgess, Drum Major Matthew Camacho, Jennifer Canseco, Annahe Contreras, Rogelio Contreras Ortiz, Lorena Costa, Victoria DeGama, Kaitlyn Diaz.
That's all right, leave it there.
I didn't do that.[1261.11][1261.11](laughter) Anira Dixon, Bastian Doliente, Angel Dong, Kaitlyn Egan, Joseph Escriba, Alex Fletcher, Ricardo Flores, Rodrigo Fuentes, Myleen Gonzalez, Samantha Gonzalez, Brooke Holmes, Mitzi Hurtado Velasquez, Nidia Jimenez Barrios, Victor Limas, Naomi Lugo, Rachel Luna, Kazir Martin, Laticia Martinez, Timothy McLean, Eric McLennan, Keegan McVeigh, Samantha Manier, Cecil Olivera, Yasmin Olivera, Laura Pacheco, Isabel Peña, Gadiel Perez Castro, Yariel Perez Castro, Sergio Perez Lopez, Laticia Pisoa, Trashawn Ponder Pilgrim, Madeline Ramirez, Jennifer Romero, Dana Rutzler, Lucille Salinas, Dominic Sama, Janet Sanchez Osuager, Giselle Santos, Jose Santos, Venicius Thomas Silva, Isis Soriano, Rosalind Soriano, Christopher Stewart, Nia Stewart, Michelle Vaillée, Emma Vegas, Nori Vlano, Ruby Ann White cell, Majela Williams Woods, Rebecca Yee. Not here tonight because she's practicing for a concert, but from our staff, Jennifer Weingarten. Now, I'm here tonight, and one of our teachers over at GLC, Ms. Jasmine Gomez, not here tonight because he had a fender bender yesterday and had to get a ride to work. It's the real-world people, Mr. Ben Rivera. And last but not least, my wife, Ms. Deborah Clark, with the color guard. What's that?[1398.03][1398.03](laughter) Oh, the middle schoolers. Oh, sorry. Okay.[1404.11][1404.11](laughter) I copied a high school list, I didn't go off of this list. So, I apologize. So, middle schoolers, we have, five. Okay, where's Javi Lopez? Javi, come on up. Israel Lucero, Rodrigo Fuentes, and, and who did I, who? Louis was, Louis was the first one here.[1431.53][1431.53](laughter) Louis, come on up, Louis, I'm so sorry.[1434.47][1434.47](laughter) So, when I, I do not, as you could see, have a secretary, so when I make a list and I hit sort, I don't always do so well. So, guys, I apologize for that, but I did get everybody correct. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
They're good.
Okay, they're always willing to correct me. So, we are good. So, folks, just a little bit to say about this group. They, they are amazing, and they were so easy to work with. So, please, when you're driving down Westwood Avenue and you see us cranking things up for next year, a smile, a wave, and a horn honk just lets us know that you support what we're doing. So, thank you very much.[1479.08][1479.08](applause)
All right? We're good?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, folks, if the second, if the first row in front could just do a little crouch down, second, second row stand, the people who are behind but with your feet up against, you guys could stand up straight. The people who are on the top row, please move a little bit forward.
You said, "Talk to the back."
Okay. You're okay, you don't have to worry about tall people in the back. Just look forward for a photo. Folks, forward. We're going to do two or three photos, just like we do at the end of competition, and then you're free.
Do we get a funny one?
Here we go.
No funny one.
Okay, last photo, five, four, three, two, one, last photo.
Yes, sir. Okay. You have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I thought, I thought.
Congratulations.
Very nice job.
Got to wait until they sort of.
Tara Sullivan has worked for the library for 14 years, primarily covering both the children's department as well as circulation. She's also served as past-
She's also served as past library liaison to the Friends of Long Branch Public Library, ultimately being promoted to Elbron Branch Manager. Tara has worked diligently in her new role, successfully increasing stats, expanding programs, and reorganizing the collections to create an amazing visitor experience. Tara exemplifies what is to be an employee of the friendly city. Her customer service skills are phenomenal. She possesses an innate ability to make each patriot feel like family, and each encounter a respectful, warm, and welcoming one. Tara's wit, optimism, and positive attitude makes her an ideal employee. She is reliable, professional, remarkable, and creative. Tara is regarded by both employees and visitors as a true asset, not only to the Elbron Branch Library, but to the city of Long Branch. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Just in case they want to take a picture. This is right there.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 13, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration, there are none. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 1919 entitled, "Ordinance Amending Article 325 Traffic of the Code of the City of Long Branch, Parking of Commercial Vehicles, Residential Parking, and Regulations of Semi-Public Property." I need a motion to introduce on the first reading, as advertised, posted according to the law, and set by the public hearing, for a public hearing in December 11, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Public portion, resolution, and for all general comments, I need a motion to open up the public, public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If anyone in the audience has a comment that they would like to make, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes, and only be allowed to speak once. Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can take the list of resolutions as consent. Roll call.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Applications? I need a motion to approve the list of applications.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Vera?
Yes, good evening, and thanks for coming. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Clark and the Long Branch High School Band. Great job they've been doing. I've been gone to a few football games, I appreciate everything they do for us, and it's just a great job they're doing. I'd also like to congratulate Tara, well-done job. Our library is one of the best, and it's because of people like you. Thank you. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and thanks for coming.
Councilwoman Vogt?
So very simply, we all have so much to be thankful for, right? Wonderful people in Long Branch, wonderful city. Enjoy the holidays, have a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving.
Councilwoman Wittes?
I too would like to congratulate Tara for all your hard work, we appreciate it. And congratulations to the Long Branch High School Band. And I would like to also thank everyone out in our community, who's out there during the holidays, helping all those that are less fortunate, and taking time out of their lives to help others. I'm truly grateful to all of you, and thankful. And happy Thanksgiving to all.
Councilwoman Selly?
Yes, I too would like to congratulate the band, and also Tara. Thank you, well-deserved. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
May it all.
I'd just like to repeat and wish everybody a happy holiday and Thanksgiving, and all the best to you and your families. Congratulations again to the band, obviously, and to Tara. I'd like to just say about Tara, you know, I guess she's been working at the library, I think, 14 or 15 years. I've known her since my son was three, and actually, he learned to read with her. So as a member of the library board, I can tell you that she's a great employee and a great person, and richly deserves being named Employee of the Month. So thank you, Tara. I just want to, a few things on the mayor's report. I just wanted to say, our first-ever student government night was on November 14. It was a success. 10 students simulated a council meeting, did a great job, and learned a lot about government. Recreation's having a holiday toy drive, collecting new toys, books, and stuffed animals. The drop-off is the rec department at 231 Wilbur Ray Avenue. Thank you to everyone who's donated so far. The city's annual Christmas tree lighting will take place on December 1, at Pure Village, from 4 to 6 p.m. There'll be live music performances and meet and greet with Santa. We're having another holiday celebration in tree lighting, which will be on December 7, from 5 to 7, between City Hall and the library. Join us there also for Merry Night with Cookies and Hot Chocolate. And we're also having a holiday decorating contest this year for businesses and residential homes between November 29 and December 20. So please check our social media to find out how to enter. Prizes include gift cards and beach passards. And also, on December 4, the Long Branch Public Library is actually the only library in the state, out of over 250, that Google selected for a partnership called Grow With Google. That's on December 4 at the public library. Google will provide in-person workshops for job seekers, small businesses, and nonprofits. I guess that's closed, Tanya, right, in terms, it's closed, but people could still stop by to enjoy what is being offered there, so.
One-on-one experts available, kiosks throughout the building, you can ask Google experts anything business-related, and that's all that.
So the point is, stop by. And again, just a reminder, because of the holidays, and I'm sorry, that was from last week, so, thank you.
I would like to congratulate Ms. Sullivan. In reading the write-up, you had quite a few adjectives explaining and telling us how great of an employee you are, so you did a fine job. I would also like to just wish everyone a safe and happy holiday with family and friends. And since it's streamed, there are a few places that is having a free Thanksgiving dinner for those who may be less fortunate and not have anyone. So I know United Methodist Church on Broadway is one of the places, so please, if you know anyone, just spread the word. If I know some of the members of that church, and they certainly open the doors for anyone who can attend, and I believe it starts at 12 o'clock. So with that being said, thank you. And now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening.